I don't know if she, I don't know if she can hear me on that. She called earlier, she was having some difficulty. Ah ha, there was somebody there.
Alright, it's recording.
Neil Repose here tonight yet? Let's see him.
Neil?
Yep, I'm here.
Yeah, he's here.
Oh yeah, I see it, okay.
Yo, Bill.
Well, here's Betsy.
Okay. Alright. Give everybody another minute or two. Okay, well, it being 6:30 or 6:31. Before we start our regular planning board meeting for March 3rd, we have a public hearing, but I think I'll call the roll before then. Just to make sure we know who's here. So, when I call your name, raise your hand, Betsy Randall.
Here.
She's here. Gentlemen, hand.
Here.
Here. Manley Gove?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I'm here. I don't think Hershey Herskoff's here.
He did that screen.
No, she's not.
Okay, so we got four people, that's a quorum certainly, so we're gonna proceed. Okay, the before we start the regular meeting, I say there's a public hearing on the major site plan 20001, Easygoing LLC. Owner Harvey Paul for the medical marijuana storefront at 297 Main Street. I'm gonna ask Neil Repose of Civil Consultants to represent the applicant to make any presentation he may wish, and then if David Galbraith wants to make a comment or two as part of the public hearing, you can do that too. And then we'll open it up for questions for the applicant. Including, but mostly from the public, and then we'll close with any last minute questions from the planning board. And this project is on the agenda of the, of the regular planning board meeting for business, but we deal with the hearing first. So where'd he go?
Still here.
There you go. Too many, too many people out here tonight, here, how'd I keep track? So Neil, do you want to give a brief presentation of the project?
So we can Okay, sure, do you want to, do I have permission to share a screen, or do I need to get switched over?
Amy, is that, can you give him the ability to share a screen?
He should be okay.
I'll try and see what happens.
See here.
Yep, here we go.
There you go.
Popped up, alright. I apologize for the text on here, it's hard to read for some reason on this one, but the project is proposing to convert a portion of the existing residential house at 297 Main Street.
I'm getting no sound.
Am I in there? Everybody else here, okay?
Yep.
Okay. So, the project is to convert, like I said, a small portion of the existing residence at 297.
No.
Excuse me, I'm sorry Neil, can everybody mute themselves? We're getting some carryover that I don't think is intended. Let's try again, Neil, thank you.
Okay, so yeah, so this, the portion that's converted, it's gonna be a 266 square foot portion of the house, it's, it's going to be the downstairs, currently the living room area, and then one of the bedrooms above, so this, this whole portion of the house, first and second floor, be converted to this use separated from, from the residential use there. As of right now, very minimal changes to the exterior, we've gone through historic district commission, gotten certificate of appropriateness, it's going to be the removal of one wall, I mean, the removal of one window, and second window will be converted to a doorway, it'll be slightly offset, but it's gonna be in the same vicinity. The wall itself is not gonna be changed, so it can be restored back to, to the previous condition. If, if someone in the future wants to do that, which is one of the big things the historic district really wanted to push for us. The, the look of it is going to be very similar, let me see if I can pull up one of the facades in that one. We have something to look at here.
Watch what button you push, and then I'll just be able to push it myself.
Yeah, I'm not sure why. So, this little guy right here.
Yeah.
It's the camera.
Oh, it's a camera, just do that. Yeah, Amy, that needs to be muted. Thanks. Okay Neil, where are we?
Okay, yeah, hold on here, I gotta get that one back up, so this is the existing, existing and proposed storefront for this building here, this is the existing side of the building. It's been, as you know, the same for many years. Fairly conventional. Not, not a whole lot of ornate, you know, decoration on this building, so we've kinda kept that same theme, here's here's the existing side, north elevation of that building, it's been, it's been added on to over the years, and some renovations to the windows. This is the entryway there, that, that's the main entry for, for the house, that goes into the center stairwell there. The proposed condition, these two windows, this window will be removed, the window that's on this side will be converted to the doorway here, a placard sign that will be mounted directly to the wall here. What you see here is a canopy that will be similar in construction to the roof of the existing entryway, but it's, it's just, it's gonna be a canopy with posts on the side, so it'll have a very similar profile, if you look at the proposed profile here. It's just gonna be posts, and then this is the canopy overhead, and then just a raised, just a raised deck to get this off of, off of the ground here for any patrons who are waiting outside to get, to get in there. Like I said, we just went through the historic district and they gave the certificate of appropriateness. So we're, we're through that step, and it's, it's ready for building permit once, once it has all of the, the plans and the renovations to the interior approved. So we're, we're just looking to get the site plan approval here for, for the simple conversion. It's gonna utilize the on-street parking, much like all the other businesses downtown here. And, I mean, if there's any questions, I'm happy to take them here.
Okay, well, ask the people, address their, is it a public hearing, address their questions through me, but before we do that, Dave, do you have anything to add at this point, or all set?
No, not really, I gave, I gave you an updated plan, this is the fifth time this matter has been before the board, and we were really waiting on a, on the determination from the historic district, and apart from that.
Yeah, we'll get to
Determined complete.
Okay, yeah, we'll get to your memo when we get done. Okay, with that, I'll take any comments or questions from anybody. Okay, oh, there's one, Greg Zinzer, unmute yourself and
Yeah, thanks Bill, I don't have any questions about this particular project. I know that really under the ordinances, it is allowed. I just want to put the plug in there, that I would really strongly encourage the planning board to work with the town council or by yourselves initially, to really undertake a re-review of the medical caregiver ordinance. And really spend some time going back and looking at it, looking at the distance issues from the schools, the distances between each shop. And spend some time looking at that, because this has the potential to really change long-term the fabric of the community in the feel of the downtown, thank you.
Thank you Greg. Anybody else? Ilya Zinzer.
Hi, Alaria Zinzer.
I'm sorry, excuse me.
No, it's okay, tricky name. I have a question, Bill, can we expect appropriate signage on this particular building? In light of the other signage that's on the Pied Cow facility, that you know, the little cow there that, that's on there, that kind of draws the eyes of the kiddos. I'm just wondering if there's any knowledge on the signage from this particular entrepreneur.
I'll let Neil take that, it's, it's, talk about a building mounted sign, there's, there's requirements in the ordinance of what the sign can say and what it can't say, but beyond that, you wanna address that Neil?
I mean, I believe it's, it's the intent of, of the developer to, to have more of a, you know, a dark background bronze sign with more typical, typical lettering just for the business. And I believe that's, that's the only thing that's been indicated to me, I know it would, it would be going through code enforcement for let's make sure it meets, meets the sign ordinance there. The only thing that was really required was just to have a building mounted sign.
To increase.
That was mute yourself.
And I just have, oh, okay, so it sounds like the sign is gonna be just a normal type sign with letters and not pictures that would attract children.
Correct.
Thank you, that's great, and I do just wanna mention that, you know, every year at the hike through history, we sit on the Sarah Orangewatt lawn with the kids, and we do, you know, educational activities, and it's a huge thing for our town. I am concerned that out the corner of my eye, I will be sitting on that lawn during the hike through history, and seeing people coming and going buying marijuana. I think that changes the feel of that very special event, and I'm disheartened. And that's it, that's just my comment.
Thank you, Alaria. Anybody else? Steve Baze?
Yeah, good evening, Bill, I had a question about, obviously a caregiver retail store can't be put in unless it's for a registered caregiver. Who is the registered caregiver, and who is Easygoing LLC? The only thing I could find was a registered through an attorney out of Portland, Maine, so who is the registered caregiver for this facility?
Thank you, I'll, I'll refer that to Neil.
And that, I do not know the name of the, of the actual registered caregiver, but they certainly would have to be registered to operate.
So I, I guess my point is that it would be inappropriate to move forward with this. It would be a violation of state law if, if the planning board does not know who the registered caregiver is. The code enforcement officer could, if he chose to, you know, confirm that with the Office of Marijuana Policy. But, but additionally, you know, who is gonna be held accountable? You know, is it, is it the Paul, Mr. Paul, or is it Easygoing LLC? If somebody is not complying with the standards of the limited ordinance that we do have, you know, who does who, who does the code enforcement officer address with, with any concerns?
It's important to note that the site plan approval is not all that's required. They, they need to get their license to the town council, and I believe that includes a documentation of compliance with state law. Do you have anything else to add to that, Joe?
Well, basically, like I said, that, once the, they apply for their license at the town office, then now they will get that information before they can get their license.
Right.
Alright, thank you, it, it had seemed that our ordinance doesn't have the licensing piece that every other town has, so that's you know, another reason I bring it up.
I think it's there, they, they have, they have to get
They have to get council approval.
Right.
And with the license before they can operate.
Okay, I was unable to find anything like that in our ordinance system. Alright, thank you.
Yeah, okay. Anybody else? Mary Ann Minard?
Hello, I just have a quick question, I know that later during the discussion, I'm sorry, I was a couple of minutes late getting here, will you take comments during the discussion, or should they all be?
That'll be, that'll be reasonable comments, timely, timely presented will be taken.
Thank you, I'll wait then, thank you so much.
Yeah, yeah. Going once.
I have a, a question, Bill Rogers on Young Street. Are there any, is there anything in the ordinance in terms of in terms of numbers of, of businesses in a particular area, is there?
There is, the town council adopted a a 300-foot spacing between stores.
Any, any store of any, of any type?
No, no, against this type, the medical marijuana retail store. I will note that the, that the planning board recommended a greater one, but the town council adopted 300 feet. Okay, good. Yeah. Alright, going once again. Thank you for your questions. We're hearing none, does any of the planning board have a question for the applicant at this time, they can wait till we get to the regular business as well? Okay, then I will close the public hearing at 6:46. And we'll open the regular meeting. Hang on a second, here it is. So this is the regular planning board meeting of March 3rd, 2021. We've done the hearing, we've had, had the call to order and roster, I don't believe Hershey has joined us, so it's still the four members. For the first order of business, we have two minutes to review. The first one is the minutes of the February 3rd meeting, and the second one is the minutes of the February 17th meeting. So we'll start with the February 3rd minutes.
I'll move to accept those minutes.
Actually, I've got a comment.
Oh, good.
Yeah, anybody else have? Let's see now here. Amy. Yeah. On the third page starts on line 124. I, I'm gonna suggest that the last 124, that that sentence that starts with the planning board. And I'll, I can send this to you, but let me read it now.
Okay.
The planning board has established a specific timeline to hold these discussions and get the recommendation to the town council at, at, at the meeting on February 17th, we established a schedule for that. So I'm elaborating a little bit on that, that sentence to indicate that we established a timeline, and we were to make recommendations by the February 17th meeting.
Okay.
Okay, and I would the lines 132 and 133 relate to that whole process, and I was gonna suggest that they be moved up between 127 and 125, I think that relates to that topic, and then the 127 opens a different topic.
Okay.
So what I'm gonna say, I'll, I'll just read what I'm gonna suggest for the changes for 127 through 130, and I'll, I'll email this to you.
Okay, that sounds, that sounds good.
Yeah, and now, this, the topic in 127 through 130 had nothing to do with the citizen petitions, and I wanna make that a little clearer.
Okay.
And that they had to do with the town's proposal for medical grow facilities in the I-1, I-2 districts, I'm gonna, I'm gonna suggest that it reads as follows. Separately, a draft ordinance has been prepared by the town for adult grow facilities limited to the industrial zones. This ordinance would be preemptive for a broader interpretation of allowable zoning and has been forwarded but from the town council to the planning board for review amendment, and ultimately recommendation to the town council. Being an internally generated zoning ordinance amendment, if the town council may be supportive of the proposed amendment, and, and that's it, it's the same, same thing, but I'm rewording it and making sure that it's, it's a separate issue.
Okay.
I'll, I'll email this to you, and those are my, oh, I know, I never, I never catch typos, but I caught one.
Bummer.
On 150? We talked about context, petitions only on the, that should read ballot, B-L, B-A-L-L-O-T.
Okay.
And I'm, I'm terrible at catching typos, but I can't believe I saw that one.
No, I appreciate it, thank you.
So, Betsy, if you wanted to make a motion now.
Yes, I'll move to accept the minutes from February 3rd.
That would be as, as amended, right?
As amended, yes, as amended.
Yeah.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Manley. All in favor, and I have to go to the roll because we're doing Zoom, I'll start with Jeff Minahan.
Aye.
Betsy?
Aye.
Manley?
Aye.
And I'm an aye, so they're accepted, very good, thank you very much. And then we have the minutes of the February 27th, excuse me, 17th meeting. On which I have no comments.
Oh, I know. I'll, I'll move to re-accept.
Okay, moved by Jeff Minahan, seconded by Betsy Randall. And I'll, I'll do the roll the opposite direction, Manley?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
And Betsy?
Aye.
And I'm an aye, so that's four to nothing, we accept that, okay, great. That's done with that, done with that, okay. Okay, the next item is public audience, I think, I think most of you are here for the discussion, I may be wrong, on the medical marijuana discussion, which is gonna be at the end of our business, if, if that's true we'll, we can take comment at that time. So is there anyone who has comment on another matter tonight? Okay, good. Okay, then we'll move on.
Thanks, I've got it.
Oh, okay, someone has to mute themselves. We don't have any new correspondents logged in for this meeting, there will be one or two correspondences that'll be logged in for the next one. There was a, an email from Gary Wetzel regarding the resource protection zone issues at the Bennett Lot subdivision yesterday, I think I forwarded that to you. And there was a email from oh gosh, I'm pulling a blank. Another butter to the project up there, that also was sent to everybody regarding wetlands impacts, and I apologize to the gentleman, cuz I'm pulling a blank on his, Joe Delatorre, thank you, yeah, just came to me, so those two will be logged in for next time. But we're not talking about that project tonight. That there's in process, and so there's no official new material in front of us tonight on that process. So, we are, I'll raise for the old business, the project that we heard on, on the public hearing tonight, MSP 20011, Easygoing LLC. Owner Harvey Paul Medical Marijuana Storefront at 297 Main Street. I don't think Neil has other things to say, but he'll give you the opportunity to.
Um, no, but just, just to note that we've gone through the, the HDC, and we've talked with Dan, and we've taken, taken his, you know, his thoughts into account, and I think that's really the only thing that's changed since, since the last meeting, so.
Thank you. David Galbraith had prepared a couple of memos for us. And, oops, hang on me. There's a completeness determination, and then there is a findings of fact. David, if you wanna put those up and walk through them for the board, that'd be great.
Do you want them one at a time, or which, how would you like me to go through these?
The completeness determination would be the first one, right?
Yep, I just wanna make sure, I didn't wanna, basically, we covered this before, it we're talking about 297 Main Street, as I mentioned before, this would be the fifth meeting going forward. And in my meeting, I basically spelled out what happened at the last meeting, the board accepted the historic district's finding, gave a certificate of appropriateness, appropriateness to the client, and apart from that, I put in some suggested suggested conditions of approval on this project, and right now, the, the applicants are really looking for approval of their, of their proposal.
Okay, so we haven't, we have, did we vote on this before?
We didn't, we didn't vote on approving anything yet.
No, no, but
we voted that it was complete.
Okay, I thought so, okay.
At the last meeting.
Okay, so there's no action that we had to take on this one per se.
It was complete on, on correct.
Okay, good.
And in my report, I did put Betsy made the determine
Yeah, I see it now. Okay, thank you, okay, I'm all set, I had one minor comment up on the, the conditions of approval, on number five.
Yeah.
Is there a word missing? Order control measures as agreed upon planning board meeting shall be installed. I think there's a word missing, I'm not sure what it is.
Yes, I will, let me go to the other document, the final, okay, so, hold on, I'm just making a note for myself, number five.
Yeah.
I'd see if I corrected that in my
Yeah, I'm not sure, there's a word or two missing, I know, I'm sure, yeah, good. Okay, then let's move on to the findings of fact. And conditions of approval, now this, this we would have to act on tonight. So what we, what we have here is complete application, we've been through compliance with the ordinance and so forth. The, the question in front of us tonight is approval or not, and if we approve it, then we'll accept these findings of fact and, and conditions of approval. So, if, if there's no comment, then why don't we march through these?
Wasn't there a lady that wanted to make a comment?
That's on the next item, Manley.
Oh, it's not on this one?
I think it's Mary Ann Minard, she wanna talk about the other project.
Okay, I'm sorry.
If I, if, if she on, I believe I got that right, I didn't mean to cut her off. So, okay, alright, so, okay, then David, I guess you, we have to go through each of these findings of fact, or we have to do them, can we do a consensus vote and all of them, or do we have to do them individually?
Yeah, if you'd like, hold on. Hopefully you can see. Okay, if you wanna go through the findings of fact, again, I can't, can you see that?
There it is, yep.
Okay, so what you can do is review the findings of fact, I called out all the sections that the ordinance, and I put sort of a how they meet the, meet the ordinance, and so you can go through, if there's any planning board member who wants to discuss a specific one, you could approve the rest. And then we could focus on any particular item, if you recall, there's 12 oh, no, sorry. Six, she, I'm forgetting how long this is, 19 conditions.
And, and just to make sure And, and just to make sure, these are, these are
These standards.
Yeah, these are specified in the, in the site plan review.
If you want, you can adopt those as written together.
Then I'll, I'll ask the question, does any planning board member want to deal with any of these individually? And if that's not the case, then we can deal with them in total.
I'm fine dealing with them in total.
Okay.
I agree.
Okay, there's a consensus on that, then fine. And I would take a motion to accept findings of fact one through nineteen.
I'll put that motion to approve. Findings of fact, number one through nineteen.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Jeff seconds it, Betsy moved it, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll take a vote and I'll call you out individually, Betsy Randall.
Aye.
Jeff Manahan?
Aye.
And the goal?
Aye.
And I'm an aye, so we accept those, that's good. Then the condition of approval.
Again, these are suggested conditions of approval.
Yeah, why don't you go through those individually, David?
Okay, number one is any modifications to the site plan as approved, tried to being made, must also be reviewed, approved by the planning board. Unless the code enforcement officer determines that the proposals are minor in nature. And may be approved as a minor modification to the approved development plans. This wouldn't be any kind of change in use, this would be, they need to move the door slightly and it's just, or they, they, they need to rework the sidewalk or something. Fairly minor, but we put that responsibility on Joe. The second one is the applicant conform to the South River sign, Berwick ordinance. For caregiver retail stores, that's just a catchall. Comply with any other relevant state statutes, which is a catchall also. Number five is chief, chief of police needs to sign off on all those finalized security plans prior to the town issuing a certificate of occupancy. And the applicant needs to provide copies and final approved security plan to the South River Code Enforcement Officer, if those can be stored at the police department for security. That's the best thing between, that's between Joe and the chief. Odor control measures as agreed upon the planning board, so this is one, shall be installed, operational and utilized during the operation of business. Prior to the issuance of the occupancy permit.
And I'll note that there's a, there's a minor wording change, doesn't change the meaning of the, of the condition, but there's a minor wording change that David's gonna clarify. Same as the other one.
Yeah, we did talk about the last meeting, oh, excuse me, two meetings, who I believe it was. They agreed they would install that, we are, you know, we have been requiring it and this is similar language to the other medical marijuana store that the town approved at three seventy-three Main Street. All portions of the bottom half, the first story windows, basically to frosted, so they need to obstruct view from the outside of products being sold in there, similar to what we have done before. The applicant shall provide new photographs, comply with state grants of each slide of all prepackaged products being offered for sale at the establishment. Photographs shall be submitted to town, town's code enforcement officer for review and approval and should be kept on file with the planning board. Case file and property file. We had done this with three seventy-three. I dropped that language in there and trying to make sure they're consistently consistent across the board. However, we want to check it as long as the packaging. They do change packaging, apparently the product, most of the time it's the same, but I don't think every new product that they're gonna sell necessarily, they have to bring in to to Joe for sign off or anything, I just, as long as they're conforming with the state law on that one. State like, state of Maine and town of South River licensing requirements, fee shall be paid and obtained prior to occupancy being issued and all marijuana product waste should be placed in a secured locked container. Or as agreed upon at the July one, twenty twenty meeting, planning board meeting, and I think I, I think I need to make a minor modification to that one too.
Yeah.
I didn't, I didn't drop the correct date in there.
Yeah, okay, noted. I think if we, if we can vote on that, knowing those corrections will be made, they don't change the substance. Okay, then this, this, this becomes the vote to approve the permit. If, if we need a motion to accept these conditions and, and, and to approve the permit.
I'll make that motion.
Jeff Manahan makes a motion.
I second it.
Seconded by Betsy Randall, any discussion? Okay, I'll call the roll, Manley.
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Betsy?
Aye.
And I'm an aye, so, okay. Good. Then will we make these corrections and send me the PDF and I'll do the signature, so.
You'll get them tomorrow.
Okay, great.
Okay, thank you, everybody.
Yeah.
Thanks a lot.
All right, let me find the agenda again. Okay, there's no action on any of the old business items tonight. By the way, I'm gonna make a note here. The MSP twenty oh oh one, the CMP substation. I believe we determined that that's been dormant for long enough that that has expired. Is that correct?
That would be correct.
Yeah, because I forgot what the, what the, what the
Six months.
Six months with no, it's way more than six months.
Right.
So I'll vote for the rec, I'll vote note for the record that that is no longer a old business, that, that has expired. That can be reflected in the minutes because there's, there was some interest in that by other parties, but let's take that action, make sure that's a, that's a clarified. And also, the number five, the Tom Harmon pit. I believe that is not an active project until he makes an application. So, so he came for information that night and we gave him some guidance, but I believe that should be taken off the list as well. Okay, thank you. Okay, that gets us to the discussion item. And this has been kicking around, we, we, we let it go as we were dealing with the more pressing issue of the recommendations on the citizen petitions for adult facilities and adult grow facilities. Which, by the way, all that got done and submitted to the town council and it's, it's part of the process, so thank you, thank you everybody for dealing with that. I think we made a ver, a rather clear statement on that. The David provided weeks ago, two documents having to do with the initiative. And as I understand it, there's a question about whether or not it be useful or desired for the town to adopt an ordinance for medical grow, and it's just medical grow. As a, I'll call it a preemptive measure to in case uncontrolled applications are proposed. When I say uncontrolled, unrestrained applications under interpretations that the town has no zoning ordinance for these types of facilities. And therefore they can be placed at any place that operates, that accepts or allows agricultural work. That's my understanding of the request. Is that about right, David?
Yes.
Okay, and other, other than the town councils and I'd be glad to, I think, I think you may have a counselor or two present tonight, if they, if they want to chime in under, under comments here, please correct me. That the idea is that there's some question about jurisdiction. And if the town enacted an ordinance on medical grow that allows medical grow someplace. Then it, by definition, doesn't allow it every place else. I think that's the intent here.
That was my understanding.
Yeah, I know there's some discussion about what the legal basis is for a bunch of scenarios here, but we've been asked to take a look at what they've done and make any comments or recommendations that we might make. So with that as a preface on this, I guess. The board members have copies of those documents handy?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Let's, let's start with the memo, the town council from I think that's it, is that the right one? Yeah, there's a memo to the town council from David back in December two thousand twenty. Do you have that up, David?
Uh, hold on, I just try to find the right memo here. Sorry. Sorry about that.
That's all right.
Popping through, through different documents, but I can sort of explain it down with going through the actual draft ordinance.
Fine, do that, please.
Okay, sorry, I don't want to waste your time, but I can pull it up. So basically, I was given a directive to look at medical marijuana cultivation and growing facilities in the town. What we looked at is adding a use, which we've kind of covered in our previous conversations about marijuana, the two petitions that came forward, but table A in the, in the zoning ordinance actually regulates what uses A could be allowed, B where they can be allowed, and C what type of review they require. So some uses, you're building a single family house in a single family zoning district, probably just a building permit, easy review. A use like this, what we did is, can I share my screen?
I think so.
Okay, if you don't mind, let's see here. Sorry, I thought this might be help, more helpful if I
Yep.
show it to you. Okay, so you should be looking at what I'm looking at.
There it is.
Which shows table A. And how we discussed it with, well, how I discussed it with the town manager is over here, if you can see my pointer, in the zoning district, industrial one and industrial two. It would require, MSP basically requires planning board review and approval. Okay, so the first change I was suggesting is adding that use to table A. Okay, and then with that, I also, as going down, I highlighted the sections, really how we break this out.
I'm sorry, David, but, but just to make sure everyone understands it, because it's not identified as allowable in any other zoning district. Is not, if it would not be allowed anywhere else in town except for the I-one, I-two.
That's correct.
Yeah, yeah.
Sorry if that wasn't clear. Um, so, under definitions, what we did is, I need to add a definition of what the actual use is. And so we need to add that if this got adopted, it would be added to the definition section of the land use code. Okay, the next next standard is we talk about in this actual zoning ordinance. These are performance standards. And I can, so these outnumber below our performance standards. And then I go through one through there we go, so this is the real meat and potato. Meat potatoes of this ordinance, so this is really what I, I want everyone to focus on, because this is going to regulate how we so the performance standards say, these are the items that the planning board should especially focus on, so they're building new buildings, they may need to go through site plan approval for that, or they would. But as far as how they operate, this is, these are the things that the board is needs to specifically look at. So we list the items listed under one through six at the zoning ordinance. Let's see, we have to have regular proficient, sufficient right title and interest. I put in here that no applications for medical marijuana cultivation facilities and local licensing will be accepted and processed to the town until that use operator is an active registered caregiver with the state of Maine. So what that requires, and other municipalities have done this, is that before we even bring an item in front of the board at the staff level, until they show that they are a registered caregiver with the state, we will not accept an application coming before the board. And that's key for us talking about a little bit later, so I'll, I'll move on with that one. So we talk about all the activities related to medical marijuana cultivation, all of it being enclosed and done within the building, so there's no growing outside, there's no storage, storing outside. Everything has to be in an actual physical building. That's for security, that's for odor control, that is for a number of different things. But to make sure we covered it, we also put now, no outdoor marijuana cultivation, storage of materials, equipment, it's a little redundant, but these are things that I've seen in other municipalities come up. We also included no monetary transactions or transfers of products between medical marijuana growing facilities operator and the medical marijuana cardholder patient may take place on the premises. To be allowed to purchase this, you have to have a state identification card to actually purchase it, so these guys, for example, anybody who wanted to do this type of use, wouldn't be actively selling person to person off the street, just coming and going as they please. Because there have been some state issues with that, or I should say some municipal issues that the municipalities have witnessed, which the state didn't really address or hasn't adequately addressed. So I'm trying to cover everything. We called it out, must meet noise standards, depending on how big a facility like this gets, the backup lights, loading, you know, the loading sirens, the whole thing, we wanted to make sure we did that. Then the rest.
I think you, you missed one there. Number eight, what was number eight?
Oh, I'm sorry, did I? Second, oh, I'm, you're right, geez, setbacks from sensitive uses, that's one of the most important ones. They shall not be allowed within five hundred feet of any existing public work, public, private school, daycare facility, cemetery, park, playground. Place of worship, worship such as synagogue, church, mosque, et cetera, any municipal facility, not including towns, towns transfer station. And the distance, we call it out, is basically as appropriate to make the standard, so anything within five hundred feet. And the planning board, again, put, we put something in the planning board, may restrict the number of shifts and or hours of operation. Again, depending if a big facility wanted to start churning out you know, packing and shipping this type of thing twenty-four seven. We wanted to have something in there so the board could say, geez, you're kind of close to this residential use, and so we're gonna limit your hours. But in the industrial park, we're pretty, pretty secure right there, so the item ten, I went a little overkill, but basically this was for odor and security. So I talked about having a security plan, it would need to come through the board, approved by the the chief of police, alarm systems, window intrusion alarms, audible police notification components, things like that. Exterior, exterior security lighting, near entrance points, obviously, we do, we require that to be pointed down. Video surveillance and all requirements of town building, electrical, fire and safety codes. So all of these really relate to A through G, all relate to security or odor. So that is the meat of the actual zoning ordinance items. Now, what I also pulled together, once we were working on the other things when we started talking about this, was actually adding a section in the licensing section of the town's codes, which really spells this out. The section one forty sixty-nine point one. That is actually talking about a licensing from, licensing process, excuse me. What I was going to do is, once we work on the meat of the application for the zoning ordinance. I want to make sure that these items are being looked at, once it gets past the planning board level and that and that staff is looking at each license that comes in, so they get approval from the board, now they gotta go through local licensing. Um, and to briefly give you an idea about how the, the state licensing and municipal licensing works is, they go to the state, they get a caregiver license, which means they can grow, and they put, the state put limits on how many people they can directly grow for as patients. So they go and get their conditional use from the, from the state, the state will basically say, they apply, they don't even have to tell the state the exact location at this point. They come in and they say, I want to apply for a license to operate a growing facility for medical in South Burwick. They give them a temporary um, a conditional license, as they call it, then they have to come to the state. Uh, I mean, from the state to the town, they can apply for a planning board review at that stage. Um, but again, these are all going to be pulled in, once we sort of figure out everything, it's, it, this was more to help the clients and staff understand the process, not necessarily planning board items, but I want to, so we don't need to focus as much on one forty-sixty-nine at this point, because once I get your comments for the items above, I'll just call out the process, and the planning board also will get to, you know, obviously make any changes to that. So I'd recommend that you read through it. But again, I'll be making changes as we go through and um, with the ordinance itself, if that makes sense, so. Um, I know that in one of our last meetings, I think it was Jeff, said the, you know, the back and forth seems a little extreme and convoluted. Um, it's because they go to the state, got approval, they go to the town, they got planning board approval. Once the planning board approves it, they can go to the council for an actual approval and licensing of that use. Once the town signs off on it, they have to go back to the state and say, I have my town approval, and the town gives them an operating license. They have to bring the operating license back to the town before Joe can issue a certificate of occupancy. So again, I kind of wanted to spell that out in that section, but really, it's, it's a way so the town can review growing operations of this nature, um, in a much more controlled um, way than, than either of the applicant, uh, citizen petitions, we're trying to regulate thing. So yes, this section does seem convoluted, but it's because I'm trying to sync up the local licensing and the state licensing also, so um, they don't come to us, we give them the license per year. Um. Or they go to the state, they get a license for a year, and then they kind of stretch it out here and there. I want, uh, when I talk to the state about it, they want, they would like us to synchronize within reason uh, when we issue licenses, so their reminders come at the same time of the year. Um, they have to get the licensing at the same time of the year, that puts the owners on the applicant rather than the town saying, hey, you're due for your license, you're due for your license, you're due for your license, so. Um, that's kind of the long story on this one, so. Um. So really what, now that the, the, the town council, I will say, reviewed this, they did not suggest any changes, it was just draft language, um, that uh, primarily me and S M P D C came up with, uh, who's the consulting firm which I work for, and then we laid this out, so this is really being handed over for the board to really iron out all the language, so this is sort of the first stage of, of us welding into it, so it's a blank block, or a blank canvas, I guess, right now, for you guys to insert any thoughts, any, you know, or any recommendations to the, to the, to the town council. That being said, what I would suggest is the planning board go through this document, make any changes you think we should, and then send it back to the town council for their review with a, with a recommendation from the board. That being, if you guys say, here's the language that we've come up with, but we don't recommend approving this, the language at least that they have in front of them would be best case scenario if, if the, the, the town council adopts your changes.
Okay.
If that makes it any clearer or more murky, I apologize, or if I may get murky, I apologize, but it's, it's, it's a very challenging process.
So we come back to the impetus for this. Uh, I think people understood that uh, this was one of these, was supposed to be an opt-in situation, just like the medical storefront would be, or the adult um, uh, retail and grow, that, 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 that the municipality had to opt in for it to be allowed in the town. My understanding is that that's not clear.
The, yes, um, oh, you know, do you want me to take down the screen sharing now so we can chat, or I can have it at the ready?
Have that at the ready, yeah, sure.
Okay. There we go, sorry.
That, that.
It gets boring looking at that.
Yeah, and there was a, a, uh, I understand that everybody a year ago thought that we didn't need to deal with this, because we hadn't opted in as a community. That's my understanding, and then there's been some challenges to that, that people have taken the uh, position that want to build these things, that it's got to be allowable, and if there's no regulation on it, it could be put anywhere where agricultural uses are allowed. I mean, I, that.
That's, yeah, that's the corrus of it. The state sort of went, well, they're growing like any other agricultural product, and they, they could be allowed anywhere with that.
Hey, I gotta stop you right there really quick. I do not believe that marijuana is classified as agriculture.
Right.
I think that is a key point to what is leading us astray as a town. Marijuana is not agriculture. Hemp is agriculture, so I just, I, I just want to make sure that's clear, because that really does change the situation for us. Because agriculture is allowed in every ass, in every part of the town. Marijuana is not agriculture, so it's not allowed in every part of the town, so we might be going after a monster that is not really there.
Yeah.
That's what my concern is.
That, that, I, I, I agree that it, is the, is there a legal determination that's been made to the town of South Burwick? That absent this ordinance, we would be uh, open to uncontrolled um, um, applications of this kind of thing. I guess, and I, we, I, 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 I don't know the answer to that question, and I, to me, it seems like that's the question we ought to be dealing with first.
I, I agree.
I, I believe, according to state law, if I'm reading it correctly, that caregivers are given the right to do what they're doing in their own homes, but also to create these um, cultivation uh, facilities as well. I believe that they have a minimum that they can produce, and they can partner with each other. That way you can get these thirty thousand plus um, square foot places. So that's where I think part of our issue is, is yes, I believe, per state law, we are the caregivers can partner up and do these cultivation facilities. I think that's what needs to be ironed out. Um, and, and the way that we do that is by opting in, saying this is what we want to do in, in South Burwick. You, we can't just turn a blind eye to it and pretend it's not there, it's there, and I think that's the start of what we're doing here. So I believe with, with col- with um, the caregivers are under a different umbrella as I see the state law.
Okay, so Jeff, uh, how, do, do you think that uh, this ordinance is necessary because of what you said, or is not necessary because of what you just said?
I think that South Burick needs to make an ordinance about marijuana establishments, and we need to d- define it clearly as to what South Burg wants to do, in my mind, this, this is just the tip of the iceberg. We shouldn't be just looking at caregivers, we should be looking at marijuana establishments as a whole. So yes, I believe that, that this ordinance is needed.
Okay. Um. And I I'm not sure that the legal argument that absent this ordinance, that people can uh, do caregiver uh, uh, facilities like this, like I, uh, it, it, if everybody says, well, this, well, that, um, has the town attorney been asked to opine on this matter? Does anybody know the answer to that question?
I'm, I'm not sure, Bill, sorry, I lost you guys, I had to reboot everything, so, um, I'm just stepping back from when I lost my connection, but.
The question, the question is, that, that, it, it, and we've talked about it a little before, and a couple of people that are present tonight have raised this issue. Do, do we, do we, do we know that uh, we're in a legal position where this kind of ordinance is necessary to protect the town? Or is it possible that uh, the, the town has to do something else, like opt in to medical grow? I have no idea, and my question is, has the town attorney provided an opinion on that to the council?
I, that I could not, I can confirm that for you, but I, I don't know that for sure.
Yeah.
I think that, that needs to be done first before we waste a lot of time on it.
Yeah, that, that's a threshold issue, I mean, if, if it's recommended by um, uh, Phil Saucier, that yes, for the, for these reasons, he sees this risk, and uh, so therefore the town is, is protected better if we do this, that gives me more of a basis to, to struggle with this. Um, and I've heard opinions all over the map on that, and I, it may be simple. Uh, I don't, I don't know if uh, anybody present has a, an opinion on that.
I think opting out would have been the easy answer.
Well, what I hear is you can't opt out. We, you, you, you have to, you have to opt in. Right, if you don't opt in, you're out. That, that's the argument for all of these things, and there, that may or may not apply to the medical grow, that, that's, that, that's a, I'm confused about that.
Yeah, when I understand it, is the only way to essentially opt out is to write an ordinance saying, South Burke does not want this, it's nose across the board for all of it. That's the only way that I have seen other towns doing it. There's no opt out, you opt in to write an ordinance saying we don't want it.
Well, but you have to opt in for the medical storefront, right? We, we, the town had to opt in.
Correct, you always have to, we, the state law says you in, that the town itself has to make an ordinance regulating and governing it.
Governing with medical grow or what?
Any of it, all. So, and we've piecemealed it, which has caused some.
I think we really need some legal uh, direction on this before we put a lot of time into it.
I, I believe Phil Saucier, uh, uh, the town attorney who I work with, is uh, has reviewed sort of what the board was doing prior to it coming to us, because I don't know, uh, they wouldn't have directed us to start working on something without counsel, without legal counsel being consulted. Uh, I'm fairly sure, if you want, if you want me to absolutely, I can confirm that without.
I think he needs to tell us directly.
You got it.
And just a note, uh, Greg Zinser has his hand up, I'm not sure.
Yeah, well, we'll get there.
Okay, I just wanted to.
Yeah, yeah, um, um. Yeah, I mean. This, this, this gives you headaches, I don't, I just don't, it's not crisp in my mind, that what, 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 what the purpose of this is, because it's been described to me that there's some uncertainties as to what can and might, and if push comes to shove, could happen here. Uh, if, if there's a, if it's clear to me that uh, in order for the town to protect itself, this kind of ordinance is a good idea, then I, I, I'm, I'm fine with that. Um, but if it's, if it's a preemptive thing on a scenario that if, if the lawyer is fine with it, he's fine with it, I, I would, I would request that the planning board be given documentation of the town's legal position.
Okay.
It comes through the, comes through the council, council, report to us. Um, and to Jeff's point, uh, is it narrowly the medical grow, or is it broader? What, 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 what does a town need to do? It, it, the specific question is on this medical growth thing, but is it a broader question that, is that, is that right, Jeff?
That's what I, how I interpret it, is that we uh, in South Burick need to handle the broader question of how we're going to handle marijuana in South Burick. As I understand it, caregivers can do their caregiving out of their homes, and that's their home stuff. They can, uh, and, and that's where it gets gray, from my understanding too, is that as it starts, as they start to want to create a cultivation area, individual caregivers are limited as to what they can do, they can partner, and then they would need more real estate. I'm think that something got brought to Perry, um, which caused this ordinance, Dave, to be working on this ordinance, I believe something went through the lawyer and Perry and stuff like that, which has caused us to be at this point.
I, and I, and I think I could explain that sort of in general terms, is that we, we did have an issue, or the issue was really brought up, because there is somebody uh, growing uh, medical marijuana in town. There's a facility that was created, the state basically said agriculture use will let it go. My uh, understanding is, when that issue got looked at, the council said, where would we want to direct such, such a use? Which in turn would sort of preclude it from going in, into other uses, which would mean if the uh, town council adopts an ordinance regulating medical growing, new facilities could only be located in the industrial zone, however, because of what happened in the past, the existing facility um, would be grandfathered, but would have to um, comply with licensing and this and that, so it's a grandfathered use in a grandfathered glow, in a, in the, in the existing location. Um, but they would basically need to come and comply with these standards.
I, I think in addition to getting a lawyer's opinion about doing an ordinance going to protect us, we need to understand exactly what is our position, what are we trying to achieve? We trying to achieve that there can't be any, that there can be some, uh, we need some uh, clear direction now. Keep hearing saying, well, the state directed this, well, I can tell you, I've got a lot of friends that work for the DOT, and they have a shovel every day, and uh, they're part of the state, who the heck is the state? Somebody needs to say, well, let's see, uh, the attorney general, or it's this person, or it's that person, has some type of legal authority to be telling us this. I feel like this is being jammed down our throat, and I quite frankly don't like it.
Okay. Well, I guess, I mean, the, 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 the we finally taken this up, we can take a couple of meetings to figure it out. I would appreciate, I mean, Jack Rodriguez, the chairman of county council, came, came to us a month ago and ex- explain this in broad terms. I, I would request that someone specifically write a memo, and it's not you, David, as good as your memos are, that says, here's why we're asking it, and here's the, the legal basis for the request, I would, I think we need that. Because. Go ahead, Jesse.
I, I, I was just gonna say, I, I would be curious as to who from the state said that um, it was agricultural use, because even if there is a ordinance, ordinance in place, I mean, if that's the argument that it's agriculture, like, is that really, there's, there's still that loophole.
Yeah.
So I don't, it would confuse me as to if, and having an ordinance would even really be.
Right, I don't, I don't understand it, and I, and, and I, that, that, way, way back when, when the, the, the town had in front of it two questions, or at least two questions, one was the medical storefront, and yet they had to take an action to opt in, to allow it. If they didn't opt in, it's not allowed, and we had that debate a year ago, and it played out as it played out. We had the uh, uh, the question about adult use stores, and the town did not opt into that, so it's not allowed, now we have citizens petitions, that's a separate issue, but that's, that's, that's how it came in. Um, but the, in the absence of an. But in the absence of an opt in. That they weren't allowed. My understanding, and I guess I'm wrong, is that the medical grow was similar. It needed to be opt in. But but I'm told that's not true now, but I don't understand it. I think someone needs to, when I say someone, I think the. Town attorney should assist the manager and the council and and coming up with a document that gives us specific. Instructions or requests, I should say, and a and a legal basis for that. I I just, I just not comfortable moving forward till we get that.
Right.
And I think we need to have an objective also.
Right, he goes, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right. And and I and as some of the confusion. On this exact topic has been brought up to the state. The state does have an office of marijuana policy.
Yeah, and I saw. And 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 Jack Kriegas forwarded to us some stuff from that. I couldn't read it. And I'm, I think I'm pretty smart. I couldn't figure out what he was saying. It just, it was gobbledygook to me. There's so many conditions, this, conditions, this, and if that, and if that. I I just, I I couldn't sort it out.
Right. It it's it's tough to read.
I suspect he didn't know what he wanted to tell us, frankly. Because why would it be so vague unless I'm an idiot?
There there are some vague bits in it. That's how we've all been learning. Now, there's. Let's just say there are medical growers in my experience, and I've dealt with this in many municipalities. Your neighbor to the south in particular. When the, when the adult, uh, excuse me, when the medical growing started. It was basically allowed that if, um, I don't know who we want to pick on here, uh, but say. I'm gonna pick on Betsy. So say Betsy wants to grow marijuana in her house, medical marijuana. Betsy can do that. And if she is also a registered patient with the state, she could have. And I'm pretty sure on my numbers here, but she could have five active clients that she could grow. Grow for and they just go to her for her, their product. She's a home licensed grower and the state has basically told municipalities. Because of privacy reasons, you don't, you do not get to regulate those few people.
I understand that.
What seemed to happen is places started growing. But they were only allowed to have five clients and six mature plants per client. I've learned way too much that I need to, but what ended up happening is places who were growing. Medical marijuana would have, like, you could go to them and say, I need a card for this. You go to someone, they certify that you're a medical. Need and they basically places, from my experience, had a revolving patient, as it were. So. Betsy is at her home growing this stuff. Uh, Amy goes in and buys something. She has a registered card. She could buy something. As soon as Amy late leaves, she's no longer a patient, is how they were interpreting it these places. So the next person who walked in the door could be her first, second, third, fourth patient for the day, because they just rotated it. So you weren't selling to five people and then growing sort of expanded to these really large facilities.
Yeah.
And so we're we're trying to limit that, but I I I agree, I can certainly get you everything that you want.
Yeah, I think I think on that matter, and then I unless the unless the board has other things to add to, we we come to a consensus, it's what we'd like to have happen. We've given pretty clear direction on that. With that, I I want to open up to, there's a lot of people hanging around waiting to. To offer comments of any type, so. Mark Zimmer. You gotta unmute yourself, Mark.
Yep, is that good? Can you hear me? So, um, my. My main issue with hearing the the growing facility draft ordinance is. That I noticed a few months ago, an incredible amount of light to the south of us. It was on a clear dark night. And I I explored and I found that that was sweet dirt. I don't know whether it was when they were in the transition of going from a kind of like an open. Plexiglas greenhouse to what their facility is now, but I have a huge concern about light pollution. Uh, whether, you know, besides the security light issue, but. More of the grow light. So I know these facilities, they're operating 24/7. They have to keep these plants. Growing, they're rotating them, their crop all the time. And. I would just hope that we have something in place in our ordinance that limits the amount of light. Coming out of these things, whether, I mean, if they're totally enclosed, great, but if they've got. A translucent panels on the top and they're, and they have these lights on all night, that's, it's gonna be. Horrible, horrible.
Thank you, Mark. Does anybody know whether sweet dirt is a medical thing or a or adult thing or what that what's that all about?
I think it's both. So I looked at investing in into it. Uh, there's a guy, Jim Henry locally over on the other side of Vine Street, who's the CEO. Um, they started out as a medical, but I, they already have in place a a variety of storefronts for when. Uh, adult is is rolled out and they already have that in place. So they're they're gonna be growing for both.
Yeah. Greg, you had your hand up a while ago, I think. Red Zinser?
Yeah, thanks, Bill. I I hope, I I do have a series of of comments to make here. And I hope I can articulate it in an appropriate fashion, because what I keep hearing and and much like you. To to the point, I do not believe the ordinance is needed. And let me try to explain my position on that. I do have quite a bit of experience navigating ordinances in in the legal community. I've been doing that for a very long time. And the. If you go and you look at the the medical marijuana statute. And and if you go to medical, you'll realize that medical cultivation. Is not, that is not an opt in. Item for you. So it begs the question, when I looked into more this exemption, what 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 is this, this, this loophole? And this agricultural loophole. And if you go on to continue reading in there, you'll know that. While you cannot limit the medical caregivers, you can regulate them. And it goes on to list a series of items that the caregivers are allowed to do. Now, unless I'm missing something and I'm way off base, here lies the conundrum. You cannot opt into medical marijuana cultivation. That's not, that is not an option for you. However, the medical caregivers are allowed to cultivate. So they're allowed to cultivate and if you start looking into it, there, that is where some of the gray area comes up. So I guess my question is, before we go off writing this whole new ordinance, and I have some comments about that. Why can't we just look to take the easier approach and regulate them in place? If this ordinance is written, we already know for backdrop. That there is an individual who has submitted a permit application for three. Eleven thousand square foot buildings for medical cultivation. Diagonally across the street from the high school that was denied. Because of the moratorium. When the moratorium is over about this whole ordinance, he'll be back. So I guess my question is. If the if the medical caregivers are allowed to cultivate. Why don't we then exercise our rights under the statute to regulate them? And regulate them in place. It's already happening. It's happening all over town. And so. Look at the definitions that we have for agriculture. Look at the definitions for home occupation. Exclude them from it if that's the desire of the board. But I think you have the opportunity to regulate them in place under the current set of circumstances. If you go ahead and if you draft this ordinance. We know that in a very short order, a facility is going to go in. And my concern with that is, are we now allowing? A facility that would not otherwise be allowed. If we were to just simply regulate it in place. So I guess my questions, as I think my way through this would be. Do we believe if we regulate it in place under the current ordinances by expanding some of the definitions? That right next door to me, Tom, the Harmon pit there that's on there, that is right across the street. Do we really believe that in that area, I think it's the R3 zone. A thirty thousand square foot building could be put up to cultivate medical marijuana. I want to be clear. The. Collectives are right now prohibited. They cannot form a collective. And if and I'll and I'll and I'll reference an article that came out a day or two ago. In the Portland Press Herald. About this very issue of the collectives and that is being advanced in the legislature right now in order to allow. The small medical cultivators to legally band together to form a collective so that they could allegedly compete. With the big people, the type people from that are coming in from out of town. Uh, in investing here in the in the community. So that is not allowed. The 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 collectives, they're not allowed. And so again, I guess my question is, I was part of some of those conversations, uh, well, I not. Not with the legislature, but with some of the stuff that you're seeing in your documentation, as some of you may be aware, I sent some questions to the manager. I got some responses. From the town attorney. And those did not answer any of the questions. So that gets to my next point. I would hope that this board would exercise their independent judgment that they have. And contemplate before you ask the town to get an opinion from the town attorney. What is the specific question that you want the town attorney to answer? I have seen hundreds of legal opinions in my career. And that legal opinion hinges on the exact specific question that you ask that person to answer. So I don't believe this issue, there is some gray area in here. But do we just wanna go along for the ride and do a whole new ordinance? To push these massive facilities out into the I1, I2. Uh, just to do it. When we could probably just regulate the medical cultivation in the current, under the current zoning. So I guess what I'm saying.
How how would? You talk about regulating it in place. Could you explain that better, please?
Well, again, uh, under the current statute, the the law says. You cannot limit the number of medical caregivers, but you can regulate their activity. So what I'm getting at here is I believe this is the loophole. You, it can happen, you know, the question then becomes this agricultural use. Yeah, that that's part of it. That that's part of the question, but the issue is. You can regulate their activity of cultivation. So how do we do that? You know, do we expand our definitions? Do we look at the definition of agricultural use and say. I believe like the town of Wells, although they have their own issues. You know, uh, medical marijuana cultivation is excluded from this definition. So it's not included. Because these are not cultivation, these are not mom and pop, you know, uh, little greenhouses. This is cultivation. This is business. So. If we're talking about regulating them in place, number one, let's understand to what extent. Can they already cultivate? Look at the number of caregiver or patients they can have, the 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 amount of canopy. And I believe right now the caregivers can only have. Five hundred square feet of canopy. That's a relatively small building. So why don't we look at making them responsible for being regulated under a home occupation? You want to cultivate? Go ahead. You know, it's happening all over town. And if we think by moving this out to the I1, I2 and allowing massive facilities to be built is somehow. Going to prevent it from happening. Well, you know, when you're talking about moving thirty three thousand square feet out to the I1, I2, you're probably talking five or six caregivers. Banding together, not necessarily banding together because collectives are prohibited, but to rent space to cultivate their product. Do we really think that's gonna happen? Why don't we regulate them where they are right now, uh, under the 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 current restrictions? I think that it can be done in place. Uh, rather than creating a whole new ordinance. It's gonna continue to happen. They're not gonna stop what they're doing. There's about thirty caregivers in town.
Yeah.
So you know, what what are we gonna do with them? Are they just gonna go away? No, they're gonna keep operating.
What what, yeah, idea of what specific regulations we would consider along your line of thinking for regulating in place?
I think if you want to talk about regulating them, I think you need to look at some of the definitions, number one. What is allowed in agriculture, which gets to, you know, uh, Jeff's point about this whole hemp issue. Uh, I do believe there is some ambiguity there, uh, with this hemp. Because excluded from the definitions, when you look at the agricultural statute, I think it's Title VII. Where it specifies really what some of these agricultural products are. It explicitly calls out and excludes all marijuana, because those are now regulated by Title twenty two and twenty eight or something, whatever those titles are. And so I guess what I'm saying is you can regulate from a home occupation perspective. Uh, you can change some of the definitions to exclude or regulate the activity allowed in various zones. So you can say, well, if agricultural use is allowed in all zones, exclude medical cultivation. Uh, in the definition of agricultural use, put it into light industrial. That's what it is. Call it what it is. So I guess what I'm saying is I think we can strengthen, use the laws on the book and strengthen what we have. To appropriately to to take care of it, rather than going through the routine of creating a whole brand new ordinance. And I want to be very clear, I respect the work that's been done in the ordinance to date. They're difficult to put together in this environment of confusion. Uh, there's nothing easily understood about any of this marijuana stuff. Uh, and so I, again, if if the board wants to move forward with. This particular ordinance, talk as a board and really understand what is your question? I tried to ask questions. And admittedly, it's a confusing topic. I the the responses that I got were 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 really just led to more questions. Uh, it's not answering. It's it's just simply not answering it and I'm with you. I'm not so sure it needs to be done, but to Jeff's point. The marijuana thing here in town is tremendous. And, you know, we have people coming out about the medical storefronts downtown. You know where I am on that. This issue is not going away and using Jeff's words, this is the tip of the iceberg. We're foolish to think. That even if this ordinance goes in with all the best of intentions to put them out there, uh, in 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 the I1, I2. Listen, we're dealing with petitions. Do you not think that in another year, someone's gonna petition and say, hey? Take that medical cultivation, put a slash in and let's call it medical slash adult use cultivation. There really isn't a difference, other than some regulations, I understand, but there's no, there's no line between. Medical, you know, medical marijuana in adult use. It's all the same. You know, I don't mean any disrespect to anybody and frankly, I do believe there's a use for medical marijuana. Uh, but I say, if you look at it, you know, do we want to just kinda. Get blown over in the wind or do we want to take a stand on an interpretation? Of is this. loophole, this cultivation issue and. Agricultural issue. I think it's a cultivation issue and that's that's part of the gray area.
Thanks very much. There's lots to chew on. Any reactions to Greg's thing or shall I invite others to make comments?
I I appreciate what Greg had to say. It'd be good if he could. He seems to be, uh, has studied quite a bit on this thing. It'd be good for him to. Keep having input, but I think it comes down to. The same question, keep. We need to have some object, what are we trying to?
Right.
Achieve. And without that basic question, it's very difficult to. To move forward.
Yes, and that that's what we're 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 coming to grips with here. Uh, other people have a specific comments they'd like to offer or non-specific comments? Mary Ann?
Unmuting always takes too long. Thank you.
Um, thank you, and thank you to all of the planning board members for your dedication. Although tonight I was just looking at those in attendance in realizing that Bill last year, when we worked on the medical storefront. Um, for the most part, Manley wasn't available and we have new members. So, um, I'd just like to sort of put a little bit of context to this and then just, uh. Just move forward with, with your thinking, I hope. So, um. A major task for you now is reviewing that town council sponsored proposal for marijuana growth facilities and I one and I two. And as you have heard and you have noted yourself tonight, there are serious questions and concerns about the, the need, the rationale and the impact. For this proposed ordinance. And questions of why do it? Do we need to? To the environmental impact? There's much research that we as a group are willing to share with you because you are recognized as the group with the experience and the understanding of the complexity of zoning issues. And we urge you, as you seem to be doing, thank goodness. To move slowly and deliberately in examining the ordinance, beginning with the why. Like the medical marijuana caregiver store red, um, retail ordinance, this draft that we have reviewed carefully. Sets very few limitations as compared with stronger ordinances adopted in other communities. We don't know if we even really need one, but there's certainly, you could benefit if you move in that direction. To looking at other communities, communities such as Lebanon, Wyndham. Who really have taken a much more deliberate and limiting approach to what they've done. The planning board gave us hope with your support of a thousand foot distance from schools in your recommendation to the town council regarding the medical retail stores. That was subsequently ignored. And we note that in this draft, it also has not even been considered that they have five hundred feet. Our fear is without you delving deeply into all of the nuances of this new ordinance draft. If indeed we have to move forward with it, we'll end up in a similar mess that we now face with the medical retail stores. Over and over, we hear that business owners and residents don't want a downtown. Or community defined by or controlled by marijuana business enterprises. Over and over, people ask us, why do we need four of these stores in our little town? And we hear.
Oh. Mary Ann, I think we've lost you. Uh, you got to get back. Technology is great, except for it doesn't work. So, well, she joins us, you can, uh, uh, get her back. Uh, other comments? Elaria?
Yes, I just want to thank the planning board. I have watched, like, I've backed up these meetings since two thousand nineteen and I've watched two and a half hour meetings. And I just want to thank you guys. You seem to be reasonable in your recommendations and you seem to really listen. And I've just noticed those things and I just want to say thanks because I know this isn't easy. And, um, I really like your opinions that you put out in your recommendations. I think you always strike the balance. Thank you.
Thank you. We, uh. She's not back yet, so, um, Barbara Hopkins.
Hi, I just want to, you know, I appreciate you guys trying to figure it all out. I, I'm a little upset that we're back to having this legal clarification all the time. And I'm accustomed to, if there are some legal things that were being considered. We get legal counsel, we ask legal counsel to maybe attend the meeting. And I, I guess I'm a little disheartened that we're not doing that already. To help expedite and answer some of these questions. And I don't know, maybe our attorney is not, you know, adept at the marijuana stuff. I understand it's confusing. But, um, it seems to me, as with the citizen petition, it would be good if. Um, our town manager who are the town council before they're putting things to you, actually, you know. Push it back and say, what is the legal counsel on this? What specific kinds of questions? It would be much more helpful and I think it would waste less of your time as well.
Well, Barbara, that's exactly what I think we did tonight.
Good, good. And as, as a, as a citizen, a landowner, I, I'm concerned about these huge buildings. Uh, we have them all around us. We've got them south of us, north of us. I mean, can we just opt out of it or just really lock it in in place?
Well, that, that, that's, that's the thing. And, and Greg's ideas are warrant of, uh, figuring out too. I mean, the, the, uh. It's as I started out a half hour ago, I, 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 I wish I understood better what, what the question is that we're, we're supposed to be dealing with. I don't. And so I think we need to get clarity on that before we jump in, jump into, go down some, uh, some valley.
And you know, maybe we ask someone from the state to come down.
No, 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 no. We, we work with our, we, I, I respectfully disagree. We have to work with our, our internal staff. We got a town council. We got professional managers. Uh, we need to, they've got good resources for them. If it got to a point where we talk estate, I think we, if we go out. Uh, 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 out of, out of, out of, uh, outside the guardrails, we're, we're, we're likely enough to do very well. But I think we, we could be very clear with them, what. Try to, try to be helpful to them, but what would be helpful to us? That's what I'm trying to do.
I, I guess one of my concerns is, um. I think this issue has the potential of changing the whole fabric of our community. And I, one, I don't know whether we can limit the number of these different facilities within our town, but. I see it very quickly. Uh. When they say South Buick, they're going to be saying, oh yeah, that's where the, uh. All the grow facilities are or whatever, and I don't like that.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, they started referring to Elliot as the Green Mile. Um, down there and, uh, and I did a fair amount of work down with those folks, but yeah, they didn't like that when the town was referred to that in a couple of articles, so.
So I don't know if, uh, there's any way to limit it just by the number of facilities. Once we hit that limit.
Uh, well, I mean, that, that, that's, that's what the ordinance are supposed to do. And, and, and we've gotten. Uh, keep, keep coming back to the medical storefront, uh, you know, we had a disagreement with the council as to what the right, right, right spacing was and. People are now reacting, my God, these places are, they're, what? Was one across from Sarah Warren Jewett House? You gotta be kidding me. And, um, that's a personal po- po- point of view. I'm, I, I think, I think. If, if the board, for another time, if the board would consider it. I would support making recommendations unsolicited to the town council regarding the medical storefront, but that's my own opinion. Because it's, it, what's happening is not what we understood was going to be proposed. It is absolutely not what we, what we thought was going to happen and it's happening. We can't stop it.
And I think the chief of police told us it was going to happen too.
Okay, let's, I'm sorry to take time. Other, other comments? Greg, you had your hand up again?
Listen, you know. I'm willing to help wherever help is needed. Uh, just want to say to the board. There is a very, very, very large difference between asking the attorney a question and getting a quick response as opposed to. Asking for a full-blown legal opinion.
Yeah.
You get a full-blown legal opinion. He, the first response is, dear so-and-so, you asked me the following question.
I know, I know. Well, well, we're, we're, we're at, I understand your question and, and I'm not relying on the attorney. I, I'm relying on the town council, the town manager in consultation with their attorney to give us the direction we want. That, that's what I'm.
Don't you have the independent authority to establish what your own question might be for them?
Yeah, why are we doing this?
Yeah, pretty much.
That's a pretty good question.
I, I think.
I think it comes down to this cultivation issue.
Well, and that, and apparently, apparently their, their hand has been pushed on this, with this other proposal that they're dealing with, so.
I think that ultimately we don't really have any control. The people have control as a town council and. Their opinion may be completely opposite of our opinion, but.
Never underestimate Manley.
He's been asked to, to do something.
Right.
And, and we're saying, okay, if we're going to do our job, please fill in the blanks so we can have a better idea of what we're doing.
Cause your recommendation can also be no at the end of the day.
Could be.
Uh, Bill, Tiffany Roberts has had her hand up for.
Oh, really?
Oh, yes.
I didn't see that.
Very interested in what she has to say.
Okay, then, uh, yeah, Tiffany, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I apologize for my video not being on, I'm multitasking. Um, thank you, planning board. I wanted to. Um, speak up for just a quick moment tonight because, uh, as you can imagine, I am, uh. Sorry, Representative Tiffany Roberts on thirty-five Buttonwood Road in South Berwick. Um, also receiving emails and, and as such around this. And I do agree with the chair in regards to the state. I'm not going to offer any opinion in regards to the ordinance and what the town. You know, should or should not do because this is a local control issue. Um, I am hoping however, to maybe offer a little bit of clarification. Um, and, um, uh, assistance i- if needed, um, in regards to. The agricultural aspect of this. I served on the Agriculture Conservation and Forestry Committee on my last term. And, um, it was that term that we passed the law that, um, classified hemp as food. Which put it under the Right to Food Act. Um. Which marijuana is not. And so my, and I've spoken to my colleagues because I've been getting these emails and, and, and messages. Um, who wrote both the, the marijuana law and the right to food to, to clarify that. Um, and also with, as Mr. Galbraith had mentioned, O M P. So the Office of Marijuana Policy. Um. I completely understand that the state law can be confusing. Um, however, there are some great minds in that office and I am happy to be a resource to connect. Um, to specific people that I feel may be of, um. More assistance and better clarification, uh, for any questions that the board may have. Um, in regards to the state law and, and how you feel it applies to the town. Um, and just, I just wanted to pop on here and just leave the door open. Um. To let you know that I'm here. Um, a lot of people don't, you know, remember, I, I'm here as your, I am your liaison to the state. Not to get policy from them, but if you get an answer from them from O M P and it makes no sense. Um, please feel free to call me and we'll, we'll get on a call together and I'll get someone on who can make it make sense. Um. I think that was it. I wanted to clarify the, the, the food part of it. Um, and, and the town does have a lot before them, um, and, and any support that I can offer in my capacity, um, I'm happy to do so.
Okay, appreciate it Tiffany. Thank you very much. Uh, I got Pam Dulong.
Thank you. I'm missing. Seeing a lot of this meeting, so forgive me if I'm asking a question that's already been addressed. My Zoom, I'm often. On this, this meeting for some reason. Um. I live at three fifteen Main Street and I did not know about the Paul House. Becoming, uh, being sold and being used for a marijuana shop. Uh, I didn't get any notifications a year ago about the meeting and I think I'm the closest resident to it and I'm. I'm really overwhelmed by this, uh, coming into this whole discussion as of six months ago or less. But I, after listening to all the, the aspects of this that has been raised tonight. And how do you control this part of it and that part of it and across from schools? And why do we have to allow these at all? In our town? Why can't, I mean, there are towns that are dry towns. Why can't we vote in, uh, uh, to not have any cultivating centers or agriculture? That's, that's one question I have. And. Do we have any hope to control the number of these storefronts that are going to be? On my block in the middle of the historic district? I mean, everybody's wiggling around loopholes, but why can't the town? Just say no? Why can't we do that? I grew up in a dry town in Massachusetts and I. I mean, a dry town's a dry town. Um. It just seems like this, this invasion. All over the state of Maine, or at least this part of Maine, and everybody's wringing their hands from Kittery to Elliot. Saying, how do we do this? How do we, how do we control this? Can't we just say no? I, that's my question. And I want to thank you guys. I mean, I have learned a lot tonight. I appreciate. Your commitment to this issue and I hope we can save this town. Or at least have a vision for it that it's controlled because. It'll be a sad thing to see this little village go. Thank you.
I think we can just say no, but I don't think it's, the planning board can just say no, and I don't. I think what it takes is the citizens to do the same that the, uh, people on the other side are doing. Put up a petition, put it before the town and have them vote on it. Right now. I believe there are people in the town government that, uh, support, uh, having all of this. Otherwise it wouldn't be going forward. But I, you can, uh, get together a petition and we can. We can't do anything about the people that are doing it now. Uh, that legally have, uh, been grandfathered, but. Moving forward, if there's a group of people that want to get on top of it, I believe it can be had done.
Okay, uh. Other comments tonight? This has been a, uh, uh, Mary, oh, she's back, Mary Ann. How are you?
Apologies. It just, I thought I said something terribly offensive and it, you kicked. I had to go up and go through all sorts of crazy stuff, but I'm back.
Okay.
So, so I, I'm sorry, I missed pieces of it, but I think I was at the point where I was saying, you know. We are hearing a lot of things from local residents, including, you know. Why do we need all these stores? And we're hearing from people in town who are telling us that, um. You know, the line now truly is blurred between the recreational and, and the, um. Medical marijuana and that, um. Neighboring people from the two operational stores know lots of out-of-state customers. That wasn't our vision, that wasn't your vision when we recognize that there are some medical needs that are, are true here in our town. But the landscapes changed, it changed now and we have much to consider. So, you know, if you doubt any of it, take a look at the websites. That advertise ATMs, assistance with local, um, marijuana, uh, medical card approval and even discounts for the first time medical card users. Um, use, can get their card there and then use that discount to offset the cost of their first purchase there. Effective marketing strategies, savvy business owners. And there's nothing wrong with being a savvy business owner. But now we face their desire to scale up and become larger scale producers. You heard about our thirty-one plus medical marijuana caregivers in our town. And they're free to grow up to five hundred feet of plant canopy and many are doing that. Others are choosing to rent spaces in large grow facilities and likewise that is their right. I don't believe it is their right nor the right of a developer with multiple grow facilities in other communities to face pressure. Put pressure on our town into approving a cultivation processing and manufacturing, um, plant across the street from Marshwood High School. Near the Bricks and Dance Works and also, uh, have in our ordinance, it only has to be five hundred feet away from the high school. Those supporting this construction project are not simply small time caregivers. Have no doubt about it. These are savvy people with business plans and some larger corporate connections. Ask, you heard tonight from Mark Zimmer when he spoke about, um, you know, plans in neighboring communities where the goals are definitely very different. So medical marijuana is no longer the choice for those with bona fide medical. So, medical marijuana is no longer the choice for those with bona fide medical conditions. Uh, is a less expensive way to obtain recreational marijuana. And again, check out the websites and read the reviews. The town council and thus the residents of South Berwick were sold the need for local people to be able to access medical marijuana without lengthy trips out of the area. Well, we're now surrounded by medical sales options. You know them as well as I do. The list goes quite lengthy. The new ordinance proposal for this medical cultivation as written will allow for unfettered limits on the size and number of these facilities. South Berwick does not have to approve this type of growth because our resident caregivers, as Greg said, um, and they're not publicly identified, by the way, they can grow for their patients on their own property. And if they want that economy of scale, they're free to rent space in other communities that have large cultivation, manufacturing and processing facilities. I believe strongly, we have a greater obligation to the future of our town and its residents than to the marijuana business. That maxim was ignored by the town council when it approved the medical marijuana caregiver store ordinance. The majority of care of all ages desire to live in a healthy, wholesome, environmentally safe, resource-protected town. We simply don't have the resources, financial or personnel, to be able to effectively enforce even the two stores currently operating now. Nobody even knew who should be notified about sign violations and keeping a store open until midnight. It simply goes unnoticed. Imagine a large cultivation facility of 33,000 feet or multiple facilities, the way this ordinance is written, and the strain upon our public officials to enforce every aspect of operation of these places, from pollution to energy use. The minimal amount of money generated will not flow into the town coffers in any great amount in property taxes. But profits will be deposited into the pockets of developers and investors. And remember, not a penny of state tax from these sales will flow to South Berwick. So we urge you to analyze deeply. We're glad you're really taking seriously and taking a very serious look at this proposed ordinance. Get that strong legal advice. Ask about the perceived need to allow large-scale cultivation because we don't see that in statute. And please align your recommendations to what will assure that all of us, of all ages will have the best quality of life in this community. It's why so many of us chose South Berwick and choose to remain here. We challenge you to let us be the small island in this sea of marijuana business opportunities swirling around us. We're counting on you to look to the future so that we can do so with hope. So, thank you.
Mary Ann? Okay. Anybody else tonight? I knew there'd be a lot of, uh, interest and there is.
Hey, hey, Bill, just remember, you gotta get all this done in like two months though, that's about.
Okay. Okay, well, with, uh, I think we, we given, uh, pretty clear, uh, direction through David and I'll, I'll certainly be, uh, more than happy to speak with, uh, the chairman or Perry if they want to talk to me about what we, what we, what we've asked for. Um, I think we can articulate it pretty well. I see Barbara waving her hand one more time.
Just a quick question. Would it be possible for the planning board to ask the town council to advance a moratorium on any future additional medical marijuana storefronts?
I suppose we, we could, uh, I don't know, I don't know. We, we, we can take that up. Or we, we, we'll, we'll talk about that. I don't know about the, how the moratorium works on, on an existing ordinance. I think there is a, so that's a question.
I'm not sure that the, uh, council necessarily agrees that that's what we should do.
Well, they did, they did not a year ago. That's for sure. Okay, all right, then, um, uh, this has been a good discussion, but, uh, let's get back to our agenda, which is pretty much finished.
I make it a motion to adjourn.
Well, before that, I appreciate your enthusiasm. But we have, we do have a, 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 a standard item, a member comment. So are there any member comments after all this discussion tonight?
Jeff?
I just, just, um, not sure where the jurisdiction is, um, just in, in conversation with the, um, the historical value of the town. I'm not sure, I know that in the, um, comprehensive plan, there is a section for uh, our historical inventory and the value of the history of this town, which I think is, is very important. Um, I also, um, I, I don't want to be, um, short-sighted as a board member and a community member in, um, hearing talks about, um, potential moves of the, even the, the town hall eventually. Um, that's a, a big historic building and I don't, I just want to make sure that we as a town are thinking about these historic treasures or jewels before they're threatened. Um, and, um, I just want, I just want to, to point, point that out that, you know, our, our main street is history, you know, it's, it's, it's a great history. It's in that, that B1 section which allows for whatever it allows for, you know, the, the businesses and the, the apartments above and whatnot. However, I think that, uh, we need to be looking ahead at, as a community to making sure we're protecting that as well. Nothing that we can necessarily do about that right here and now, I'm not requesting anything. I'm just bringing it up since it was, uh, a portion of some of the business that we had to deal with today.
Thanks.
I think the historic society, uh, could, could work on an ordinance that would protect the, the, what you're talking about. And then once that's approved, we could administer it.
Thank you. It's come up a couple times. I raised it about a year ago and, uh, didn't have support of the board of, uh, uh, reviewing the medical storefront ordinance and recommending changes to the council, which they may well ignore. Or they may not ignore. Is there an interest of the board members here tonight to take up that task?
Absolutely.
Sure, you can. I, I think we've, we've had, uh, we've had enough here and, uh, I think there needs to be some limits.
I mean, the, the, okay, so let's, let's log that tonight. Uh, Hershey's not here. She may have a different opinion, but uh, let's, let's, let's put that on the agenda for next time, Amy, and we can have a discussion on that specifically. I think the issues that, uh, have presented themselves since the ordinance was, uh, approved, uh, is the misunderstanding, and that's a kind word, of how the 500-foot setback works. Uh, none of us ever expected that this property that we, we had to prove tonight would be in that, uh, in that section. It just was not the understanding at all. Gonna go out beyond Young Street and, uh, and, uh, the downtown was off limits. Uh, the other thing is the, the density of these things. We, we recommend the 500-foot or 1,000-foot, 1,000-foot separation between storefronts. Town council adopted 300 feet and look at them, they're pouring in. So I, I, then, then let's put that on the agenda for next time to talk about as to whether or not we choose to make recommendations for changes and if, uh, if nothing else, we'll make the recommendations.
But if they don't, we need to, after we, uh, we say that, they need to tell us whether there's, there's, uh, support for that because if, if there is no support, there's no sense us wasting any time on.
I don't, I don't know. With all the issues going on, I think we might be able to make a pretty good statement. And if they listen to it, great. If they don't listen to it, that, that's, we can't control that. I think, I think we all are, all the input that we're getting from the public and from observing these as board members suggests to me that we're on the wrong path with this ordinance. And there's lots of other ordinances here, but we oughta, we oughta try to, try to do that. And if the council wants to uh, take it in position, they're free to do that. We're, we're not the same as them. Okay.
So we'll talk about that at our, at our next meeting, Bill, for clarification.
As, as, as to whether to do it and then if we choose to do it, we'll take it up.
It could, uh, Amy, could I bother you to have that sent to all of us and, and maybe place the, the existing ordinance on the website for the next meeting under the agendas?
Yeah, good, okay, great.
What did you just ask me for? I'm sorry.
I was just saying, could you take our existing, um, medical storefront ordinance? And, and put it as, in addition to the agenda item, uh, send all the board members or at least the link to the, uh, to, uh, so participants can, can chime in if they want.
You got it. Yep, I'll add it in.
And I'll get you, uh, some form of an update for our next meeting on, uh, the I, uh, the industrial district, uh, medical growing.
Yeah, and, and, and what we, just to be clear, what, what, I think we, the consensus was tonight that we were asking for is uh, uh, a clear description of why we're being asked to do that and the legal basis for that. And then we can consider our options based on that explanation because the explanations so far have been vague at best.
Sound good.
Okay. Hang on a second. Um, good, so, uh, all right, we done a lot. Manly, you can do your thing again.
I make a motion, we adjourn.
Is there a second? Thank you very much.
Thank you.